Okay, 7 o'clock. I call this city council meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Would you please rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for the record, Chief Klinger is missing from staff. His father's funeral was today, so that's certainly understandable. Council are here with the exception of Judith and Jermaine. Do I have a motion to excuse their absences?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to excuse Judith Dunley and Jermaine Cornigay from tonight's meeting.
Motion was made by Councilmember Kinzer, incented by Councilmember Lemley, to excuse the absences. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, there's Jermaine. Yeah, take a break. So, next up is the consent calendar, items A through I. If there's anything on there a council member would like to pull, let me know now, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
Actually, I'm sorry, I just actually had a question about something. I remember that now. There was something on there, I'm not looking right now, but about a learning, I was just curious what that was, what that was for. I believe it's on the first page of that.
So, we're looking at...
I'm trying to get there.
Under Finance?
I wish I could remember the line. Sorry.
I see, I don't see anything related to education.
Early literacy program, it's 105, Clean 105, the first line of that. I was just curious what it was, I saw. No big deal.
Do you have to give Patsy some direction if it's Finance?
On page 13. Yes, that's what I should have did. Page 13, it's under EFT US Bank purchases.
That would be a library expenditure. We provide early learning opportunities for the younger citizens in our community. This may or may not, Deborah, who's gonna have to nod her head if I'm right. I think it's part of our discovery boxes. We have themed discovery boxes with books and, you know, they're really cool.
Yeah, I've seen those. Okay, I was just curious what those, thank you.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Items A through I.
Mayor, I move that we approve items A through I in the consent calendar.
Motion was made by Councilmember Cornigay, seconded by Councilmember Kinzer, to approve items A through I on the consent calendar. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And it carries unanimously. Okay, now we're down to the public comment period. If we have people who want to make public comments tonight, please limit your comments to three minutes. Step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to the council. Anybody want, any takers? Mary.
My name is Mary Anderson and I live at 928 Beachley Road. In the early 1960s, 35 years after it was built, Cedar Woolly's beautiful Carnegie Endowed Library was demolished, the result of a dirty backroom deal done by a member of both the school board and the library board to benefit the school district. Now, 55 years after that, yet again, another backroom deal has been arranged to give away our city's Carnegie endowed library to a county entity ostensibly to benefit the school district's kids. Let's be very clear and keep it simple. By voting for these ILAs, you will be giving away Cedar Woolly's library to a county entity. You will be giving city-owned assets to a county entity. And you will force the citizens of Cedar Woolly to pay for that new building. In any election, the side that receives 60% is declared a winner, and the 40% side is declared a loser. So, with Cedar Woolly citizens' 40% ownership of this, really not a partnership, library proposal, we, the citizens, will lose all control over how our library is run, what it will look like, and what its contents will be. We will, however, be responsible for 100% of its debt. In most people's books, that makes us suckers as well as losers. And we become losers even without a vote. Furthermore, who are the real losers here? The children of Cedar Woolly, who would no longer own the library and heritage that their parents, grandparents, and even great-grandparents worked through the decades to establish and maintain their city library. A yes vote on these ILAs will gift our children's books to the county's children, although allowing our children to use the books that were once theirs. And, as part of this great deal, our kids will be saddled with debt for the next 20 years to pay for this new library that will not belong to them. 60-40, right? When did our children become less important than the county's children? Not equal, but less. No matter how awful it is said, wrong is right. Wrong is right. Wrong is right! The fact remains that wrong is wrong. And it is wrong to give away our library without a vote of the people. If the people vote yes, then you have done the right thing and your consciences can be clear. But if the people vote no, then you have your answer about this backroom deal. But not to give the people a vote at all, that is wrong, and you know it. Otherwise, there wouldn't be all this bluster about how it's going to be bigger, better, benefit the kids in the school district, bring business into Cedar Woolly, et cetera. If you were convinced these ILAs were right, you wouldn't have to protest so vigorously, and in some cases, so viciously. Please, don't go along with this backroom deal. No one looks good or feels right about it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else?
Yes, I do need it. Yes, I'm pleased to hear that. I don't have a hand, so I'm gonna try to do the best I can. Okay. My name is Eric Anderson. I live at 928 Beachley Road. It is very convenient for the ci... I'll read this down because I have a terrible cold, so I can't just, you know, read without something. It's very convenient for the city that the Cedar Woolly High School, I guess.
Scandit Valley.
Scandit Valley, here, forgive me. So willingly mis...
Excuse me, what are you doing?
You would see it.
Oh.
You would see, sir. It has to do with what I'm reading. So I'll start all over again, then you'll start the time all over. It's very convenient for the city that the Cedar Woolly, no, Scandit Valley, here, so willingly misnerves the library proposal, the library partnership. I myself prefer library gate, which more accurately conveys the underhanded methods being used to give away and get rid of our library. I understand that the mayor and the city supervisor wish to get the city library off the city budget. But why not do it honestly, in the original way intended, by asking your citizens to vote on it? It is because the mayor, Wagner, himself, stated on 10/24, and I quote, "They don't want us." So, to sweeten the deal, so they will take us off your hands, you unfortunately ask the citizens to finance, building or renovating, then abiding, giving them a respected and loved collection, and leaving us with virtually no representation, all without a vote. Let's take a look at some of the numbers you got to hear. The CSN, per that 2017 budget, as you can see, would spend nearly $320,000 in pressure alone. In comparison, Cedar Woolly Public Library would spend an 7 pressure, utilities, online databases, books, and programming, at a total of $319,000. It's very easy to spend public funds. The Cedar Woolly Public Library does an incredible job serving the public on this food stamp budget. My next question is, what happens when the construction money runs out and the building isn't finished? Who's going to pay for the cost overruns? We, the Cedar Woolly, city taxpayers. That's who. And who knows if the current major and the city supervisor will even be there when that happens? Taxes will go up, no matter how much you promise, whatever you promised today. Or maybe you just scale down the building size or embellishments. Then the city taxpayers will end up with a smaller library than we have now, to serve over twice as many people. Anyway, you slice it, the citizens of Cedar Woolly are losing out. We need to begin a vote before these binding ILAs are voted on, and that's the correct and honest thing to do, Mr. Mayor. Stand up for what is right, city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alvy. Anyone else for public comment? Very good. We'll move on to, there'll be no public hearing tonight, so unfinished business, item five in your packets, page 114, the proposed comprehensive plan amendments to the 2017 docket, which is a second reading, and that's you, John.
Okay. So, at the, at the last work session, the city council and the planning commission got together and looked at potential items to be put on the 2017 docket, which is the listed items that the planning commission will work on for amending the comprehensive plan in 2017. As noted in the memo, we only get to change, do any amendments to the comprehensive plan once per year. Staff had recommended five items, I'm gonna read them off briefly. Some amendments to the parks and recreation element, some amendments to the sewer plan and associated updates to the capital facilities element to address the sewer, future sewer strategy for the land added to the urban growth area last year. Zoning map amendments to address new property lines resulting from a short plat, and then any rezone requests that might be received between now and June 30th. So, anybody that wants to do any proposed zoning changes has a little bit extra time to do so. Oh, and then amendments to the comprehensive plan and zoning map desired by the planning commission or the city council. When we were talking about this, the city council had discussed the possibility of studying a rezone around the property south of the Cedar Woolly High School, roughly in the area of 109 Jameson Street. So, that was a new idea that had come up at that, at the work session, so it was discussed and it's on the, on this list of items that could possibly be put on the docket. Did a little bit more research on that prospect and just wanted to let the council know there's just a couple issues that weren't raised at the last time, and this really surrounds, like, how we, how the staff might go about approaching this rezon. And again, when I say rezon, I mean studying a rezon, not necessarily, you know, a done deal sort of thing. We'd study it and see if it would make sense, and then study what zoning might come in, might be the best choice for that property. So, the couple of paths forward would be to have staff do, with the planning commission, a couple of public hearings, well, as many would be necessary, and study the issue to the best of staff's ability, which would be me working on it solo with the planning commission. That would get us a rezon. We'd have to study also the loss of industrial land, because right now that property is zoned industrial, so we would probably want to address, well, how it would replace that land, if we were to replace it with industrial or commercial, or what we would need to do if it were to be rezoned. And then, depending on what the zoning is, say it was residential, we might have to then study whether or not we need that much additional residential land in our, in our urban growth area and city limits. So, those are some of the issues that we'd be addressing. That would be taken on by myself with the planning commission, so we do our best to, and hopefully, come up with a good result. A second option would be for staff to work on it and for council to approve money to hire a consultant to do a more thorough review and come up with possibly a subarea plan, look at more of the transportation issues, do a further study. Now, that would require council putting some money into it, so councils want to decide how much they want to put into this process. A third option is to hire a consultant and to chase down an integrated planning grant, which we refer to as an IPG, which is grant money through the Department of Ecology that would enable studying the property to see what environmental hazards there are. So, the site, largely being a mill site, we know that there's some potential for contamination on the site. We don't know the extent, it's not our property. So, through the IPG, the Integrated Planning Grant, we could do a phase one study, which would do a historical search of the known uses of the property and find out if there was any known underground storage tanks, any, you know, there's, there's talk of, like, machine repair, where they did wash areas, see where there might be some contamination in the soil, and determine what liability that would be. The reason for this would be to determine what the future use would be and to inform any future purchasers, it's really not a good way to say that, excuse me, anybody who had wanted to purchase the land in the future, they would have some surety of knowing what contamination is on the, on the property. So, it's a little bit of a different process for the community to do that research ahead of time, but it is a proactive measure to help the property develop in the long run. Through that IPG, we would also be able to discover or lay out a plan for how to best manage the mediation, remediation of any of the found contaminants. So, in essence, what the city would be doing is putting money forward, we would have to pay for the grant application and some consultant assistance through this process, and then the consultants would use the IPG money to find out what the environmental liabilities are of the property, thereby allowing, helping future development of the property. Enables people who want to buy it, say, okay, I, that they'll have some real sure ideas of what they're be getting into and how much money they would have to spend in order to clean the property up. And there may not be that much out there, we don't know. That's the whole point of the study. So, that would be the most expensive process, in some ways, because you'd be spending the most money, but we'd also be getting, we'd have to hire consultants to do most of this However, there would be money available to, to defray some of those costs. So, those are just some of the ideas that we had. I don't know that the council needs to make any decisions on which one of those three paths forward right now, I just wanted to lay that out in, as the council decides whether or not to even put, looking at a rezon of that area on this year's docket. If the council does decide to put it on the docket, we'll get to these details in the future. Right now, we're just deciding what items the city council would like to have worked on during the complan process in 2017. Any questions there?
So, council, we're looking at page 114, and there's six items in the motion. Do you have any questions or concerns about any of those six items?
I guess, it seems like we did an awfully large city rezon within the last few years, and it seems like we didn't throw that much at it, we did it through the planning commission. Why is this thing more complicated? Why are we giving some of the options to this process?
Well, we did throw a lot at it. We had, we had two staff members, two full-time planning staff members at that time, and we did a full community outreach on that. We sent direct mailers to everybody in the city, I believe. So, that was a large outreach program, and we had two staff dedicated towards it entirely. We looked at all of the zoning throughout the entire city, and we did, we did actually review the impacts of those changes on the amount of buildable land, commercial and industrial and residential, and kept it all in balance under what the county had approved for the city of Cedar Woolly under the, back in 2005, for the amount of commercial and residential land that they had allocated us. That was in 2009 when we completed that process, so I think we started in 2008, finished in 2009. I should have that tip of my tongue, but I think that, I think that was when we completed that work. So...
So, Brett, that's item one that you're asking about. That's your, at your request that it's there.
Yeah, well, no, I just, I just, I'm just, I'm questioning, I mean, it just seems...
Oh. Well, John was just saying, there's a lot of different ways that it could be done afterwards, but you do want it on there, right?
Of course, yeah. And, and we have the possibility of an ecology grant, isn't that correct?
That's the IPG grant that I was gonna give you. And just to clarify, under the recommended action, item number six on there is actually amendments to the comprehensive plan or that might be added tonight. So, really, it's no additional, no additional items, it would really just be a recommendation for items one through five, just to clarify in the motion.
So, there you have it. Second reading, if you want to take action.
Is there a suggested motion, or do we have to do each individual?
No, recommended action is at the bottom of page 114.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve items one through six for inclusion in the 2017 comprehensive plan docket.
Second.
The motion was made by Councilmember Sandstrom, seconded by Councilmember Johnson, to approve items one through six for inclusion on the 2017 comprehensive plan docket. Any further discussion? Sorry about that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And it carries unanimously. Item six, resolution, building and planning and engineering fee schedule, second reading, page 115 through 128. Is this you, Mark? Or is that G2, John?
All right. So, every once in a while, staff has to update the fee schedule to keep it current with the permits that we have and the actual costs of the permits and items that are on the list. So, this is a fairly minor update. The largest items that planning is recommended to put on here is a fee for the planned action. That was an item that, that's a new review item that we enabled in 2016, and so there needs to be a fee associated with any applications that would come in with the planned action. Staff has recommended $300 just to cover some staff review time and not to make it a terribly expensive process for anybody who would like to submit a planned action review. So, the planned action item is if anybody wanted, if a company wanted to develop out at the Swift Center, if what they're recommending fits under our planned action ordinance and the SEPA, the, I'm sorry, the SEPA environmental impact statement, then we just review it, make sure that it fits under what was previously approved, such as, you know, Geneki Bioenergy wanted to build a facility per the, for the subarea plan and the EIS, they would be able to do so, there's just a minor review fee to make sure that, so staff can review it and make sure that the application meets the requirements of the ordinance. The, a couple other added items, updates to the binding site plan, recommend increasing that $600 from $400 to $1,000. That still keeps us well below every other jurisdiction, but binding site plans are more or less a long plat, except for commercial property, and they, they require a lot of staff review, and $400 would be, you know, like, five or six hours worth of staff time, and it takes a lot more than that. We're not trying to make the prices high, we're just trying to cover our costs a little bit at least. $400 seems terribly low, so we're recommending increasing that to $1,000. And then, do you have any other questions about these items? Let me know. One other one is we've added administrative review fee for when somebody does deferred impact fees. That means they pay, typically, if somebody builds a house, they pay all of their impact fees at the time that they pick up the building permit. We've been able to process many years ago to allow the builder to build the house and finish it and have it ready for sale and pay the impact fees at the time that the house is about to sell, so they can use the money that they earn from selling the house to actually pay the impact fees, instead of them having to pay the money ahead of time before they pick up the permit. What we've discovered over the past several years is that the process works fine, it's just a tremendous amount of work for Joanne. She has to touch the paper at least six times as it goes from the applicant to her, from her to the mayor, and then has to be logged and then returned to the applicant so they can file, they can file it with the recorder, they can record it at the auditor's office, and then when the lien is released, it has to come back to Joanne, Joanne has to process it, get it back to the mayor, get it back to Joanne, and log it again. So, hey, we find that it takes several hours of Joanne's time over the life of one of these. So, that's why we've recommended a fee for that now.
So, just based on the number of those that I signed, this has turned out to be a wildly popular option, I think developers really like it.
Yeah, it has been popular, and we don't, as staff, we don't have any problems with the, with the system, we just do spend a lot of staff time on it and think that it would be fair to recoup some of that lost cost. Other cities charge as much as $250 for such a, for such an administrative fee, we're not recommending such a high fee.
Okay.
I had just a question for John. Let's say a builder is the, is the owner and he's gonna rent it out, when do we collect the impact fees at that point?
We do not issue a certificate of occupancy for a new building.
Oh, it's okay, it's upon, okay.
So, if, it's really intended for people who are, are building houses on spec to, to make sure that, to help them. that, to help them, pay different some of the costs at the front end of it, and, you know, they make their money when they sell it. So, we've created a system to allow them to pay a bulk of their fees at the time that they sell it. Now, if they don't sell it, yeah, then we got a problem. So, that's why we, you know, then they wouldn't, if they just rent it and they don't sell it, they still have to pay their impact fees. So, we do not issue the certificate of occupancy unless they pay their impact fees, and nobody can move into the house. We do have a methodology established, so...
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay, the recommended motion is on page 115, and the next resolution number is 95417.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on that...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
...we have one correction, or two corrections to make on page 125. We found two sewer inspection fees listed on page 125 under the single-family residential last line and multifamily residential last line sewer inspection fee. That's duplicative of the sewer service permit that's on page 124, about the fifth line down, and we would request that those two lines be stricken as part of the motion, just to clean up the paperwork here.
Okay, does council catch that?
Mrs. Kay Holmes.
Page 125, under the single-family residential, the sewer inspection fee, and under multifamily residential, the sewer inspection fee are duplicative with page 124, the sewer service permit. And so, the request just simply would be that we would strike those two lines as an administrative correction.
Got it. So, sewer inspection fee on page 125 in both instances would be stricken.
Just like on the structure improvement, it says valuation, and it says deck, like $12.84 per square foot. That's not the fee that the person who wants to build a deck has to pay, is it?
No, that's the valuation of it. So, first, we determine the value of it, of value of the building based on the square footage, and then we use what's called the, it's on the first page, the current building value, valuation data published by the International Code Council. So, basically, you run it through this table down right here below. So, you figure out your valuation based on, you know, $12 per square foot gives you your value. Then you take it to this table one, and it turns out a number based on those figures.
Okay. I see now. We're thinking $1,200 for a fee for a deck is a lot, so, okay.
No, it's just nearly a fraction of the value.
So, page 115 at the bottom is the recommended resolution. Next resolution number would be 95417. And remember, there was two strikeouts on page 125.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 954-17, a resolution adopting an updated building, planning, and engineering fee schedule, minus, wait, striking, was it 125, striking sewer inspection fee on page 25, two lines.
Motion was made by Councilmember Carnegie and seconded by Councilmember Owen to adopt resolution 954-17, a resolution adopting an updated building, planning, and engineering fee schedule, and striking on page 125, two instances of sewer inspection fee. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And it carries unanimously. Thank you very much, John and Mark. On to new business, draft interlocal agreement for the cooperative establishment of a community fiber optic network in Skagit County. First reading, that's on page 129 of your packets. And who's introducing this?
Hi, Ken. So, this comes from Bill Chambers, who is overseeing this work for the city, but doesn't usually come to council meetings. So, I guess I would call your attention to pages, where are we at here? Oh, 134 forward, which is the strategic plan. The basic concept behind this is to create an open access carrier-grade fiber optic network that would be owned by a consortium of local governments. So, the concept is we would each own our piece of it, but we would jointly manage it for the benefit of the broader community. So, it's a multi-million dollar, long-term partnership to allow for the movement of data. So, much like our road structure is owned by the public, but the free enterprise world is welcome to run FedEx trucks and UPS trucks on it, this fiber optic network would operate similarly, and that the public would own the pipe, and there would be multiple providers competing for end-user business through that fiber optic line. The port of Skagit and Edask have taken the leads on this project. In fact, the port was successful last week, I think it was last week, in obtaining the $50,000 grant from Curb, the Community Economic Revitalization Board. They're matching it with $50,000 of port dollars, and that's intended to fill in some detail of this plan. The port, as well as other partners, will be requesting from the county's nine-tenths fund next month dollars to help build each of these segments. There are five segments identified, only one of which is built today, and that's the Seadrill Woolley Hamilton segment, which was, incidentally, also built with nine-tenths money years ago. So, the draft interlocal is very much a draft. I don't believe the county legal team has looked at it yet, so we know we're going to see changes to it. But it seemed important for the city council to see this and just to understand the big-picture idea behind it, which is work together. You know, when you open a trench, make sure you get conduit in for fiber. Don't build redundant fiber. You know, these fiber lines usually have a minimum of 128 strands, and these strands are getting close to having the capacity to move a terabyte of data on a single strand, which is enough data to move, you know, to support one of those data centers that have moved over to Quincy, Washington. So, it's tremendously powerful.
That's a terabyte a second, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, we're used to dealing with, you think about your DSL, where I think you're running about five megabytes a second down and even less up. If you switch to your high-speed cable modem, you know, you might get 25 megabytes down and maybe 10 up. With fiber, you have exactly the same in either direction, and you're now running not megabytes or gigabytes. Gigabytes are typically what they're running on these. One gigabyte, in fact, is kind of the standard model, but they've got technology now that can get that up to a terabyte. So, just remarkable quantum leaps in capacity. So, you can see on page 130, the basic elements are five components. Have a dig-on's policy. Let's do efficient, effective use of public resources. Let's not overbuild, have redundant fiber. We don't need, you know, the county line and the city line running down the same street. We can have a shared line. Let's be consistent. We need to have a single operations center, because one of the elements of this, if you commit to a carrier-grade system, some of the customers on this system will in fact be telecom companies running your phone calls through our fiber. And we'll have to have a 24/7 management structure, network operations center available to address those concerns. The business plan, the idea that there should be return on investment. So, unlike a road, which as much as we love the roads, they don't actually pay for themselves. Maybe a road to a Porsche dealership, that might pay for itself, or certainly the Hopper interchange, I suspect pays dividends for Burlington. But in our case, it's hard to identify a road that the road generates revenue directly or indirectly such that it pays for itself. You know, the fiber plan is really built upon the premise that as you build it, you build it with a business model that it pays for itself over a period of time. Now, the return on investment's going to be longer than what a private sector investor would normally utilize, and that's the reason why we don't have as much of this fiber built today. But with the public sector ownership, we can build in places where private sector's not likely to go. For example, concrete, you know, tying concrete to Anacortes with La Conner in the middle. You know, there are places where the math doesn't work on the seven-year payback, but it works okay if you look out 15 or 20 years. So, next steps, feasibility study. Again, the Curb grant was just awarded last week. Bill Chambers was down there with the team, making the case for Curb. No action necessary for the council tonight. It's just a fairly exciting project that's coming on board involving a lot of partners, and we wanted you to see it as soon as the draft had been released.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council?
Oh, I did get to see a demonstration of fiber fusing, which if we get a little further down, we've got somebody around who can show you that. That's fascinating. You know, you look at the picture on page 149 with the fiber, 128 strands. So, each within that pipe, there's a set of colored strands, and within that, they go in a particular order. You know, there's a green, blue, and all the way down the rainbow. And some of them are fairly similar, like a white and light brown, which I had a hard time seeing. But then, they further add to redundant colors for a second set, maybe little dots or dashes or a little string or something. So, when you're fusing this fiber, you have to fuse the right pattern and match the dots or dashes or whatever they are. And so, and it's really, really small. I mean, it's just pieces of glass that are teeny. I mean, they're bigger than the human hair, but they're very small. And so, you trim it, you strip it, you put it into a $20,000 fusing machine that's about, I don't know, about the size of an iPad, and then that actually, you know, fuses the glass together. And there are some high stakes on these. You know, broken fiber lines have a great deal of expense associated with the loss of data. So, you know, these crews are running 24/7, they're doing scheduled network maintenance, generally in the middle of the night when data demand is lowest. And so, the equipment that they use and the training is pretty specialized. One thing that became very apparent to me is you can't be colorblind, and you have to have exceptionally good eyesight to do that work.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, and I just want to give credit where credit's due. I think I heard about this first from Helge.
Hmm?
Yeah, you were the one who talked about this early on, so...
May I then just ask a question for Mr. Berg if we came up with a connection with this?
Since we're ahead of schedule, I will allow you to ask him a question, yes.
Thank you very much, Mark. Mr. Berg, it's going to be a connection fee to when you connect it into the homes, right?
So, the Seadrill Woolley City Council hasn't had any conversation about fiber to the home yet. Both Anacortes and La Conner have been talking about actually getting fiber to the home. The way this model works in other counties in our state is that there are multiple providers who use the publicly-owned fiber, and then they charge the fee. So, for example, in Ponderay County, way up in our, you know, north, northeast quadrant, they've got fiber to the home in an extremely rural community, and they're running, my understanding is about a $50 a month cost for lit fiber. So, you've got access to the world that rivals Redmond out in the middle of nowhere, and obviously, you're going to be able to run your phone, your entertainment, as well as all of your data on that. Now, they were fortunate. They were early adopters, and they had, I believe, a $26 million grant to roll out this fiber in that particular county. We're coming to the party a little late, honestly, for the funding, although it's possible that the federal government may have a round of funding. So, I don't know what the math looks like. You know, Anacortes seems to think they can do it. The key is the demand. You know, it's how many homes in a particular area, for example, in your neighborhood. If it's just you, it's going to be pretty tough to get the fiber there. But if everybody on the street wants it, you know, then you can add that last little bit and start connecting folks.
Yeah, but at the farm, I've been known just on the direct, so about $2,500 is going to pay for having it put in there.
Yeah, so, the, there are different models, and I've heard of a few examples. One would be that model, which is I want it, so send it to me. The other model is there are enough people down the street that that connection fee goes way, way down and becomes far more reasonable. I think Mount Vernon, I checked on fiber in Mount Vernon probably 10 years ago, and it was about $1,000 at that point. But a lot of that was the actual optical equipment in your building that tied in, and I think the prices have come down on that. So, I'm not sure where Mount Vernon lands today. But if you're going to get homes connected, it's not going to be $2,500 bucks, or people are just going to stick with their $40 a month Comcast.
Okay. Thanks. So, moving on to item eight, ordinance establishing the crime of misuse of the 911 system. First reading on page 173.
So, this is one of a group of ordinances that I'll be bringing you that are, I guess I'll call them detective-requested ordinances. We've had a couple of recent calls. I'll just give you the two most recent examples that prompted us to think about this. And I think I did talk about them in the ordinance. One was the person who wanted to use the restroom facilities at Hammer Square, called 911, reported a distressed woman in the restroom. So, that resulted in a two-person BLS unit, a two-person ALS, that's Basic Life Support Unit, that's R5519, a two-person Advanced Life Support Unit, that's Med 1, a fire officer, sergeant, and a police officer, all crews out to the scene. We discover the bathroom's locked, so there's no way anybody could be in. So, of course, they'll have keys. They open up the bathroom, it's vacant. Clearly, there couldn't have been somebody in distress. The caller then requests to use the facilities. If you don't mind, the door's open now. Thanks, can I use it? So, you know, that's a lot of people and costs. So, we pay per 911 call, and for fire responses, we pay our volunteers every time there's a call and they check into service. And then, there's an opportunity cost for real calls, and that's really what concerns me the most, is you get that entire team going there, and you have a simultaneous call for a CPR in progress. You know, there's clearly a prioritization and order of calls, but, you know, once you're on scene, you've committed to the call, and at least some resources aren't going to be able to peel off until they've figured out where they're at with that call. So, it's frustrating. The other one that happened here, oh, maybe two, three weeks ago, was the caller who's been hanging out downtown a lot lately and has been probably the subject of many emails to you. It's court day, you know, let me call 911, see if I can get a ride, you know, and, you know, we don't compete with Uber. We don't do that. That's just not an appropriate 911 call. So, the thought was, well, what do you do? I mean, you get the police down there kind of puzzling, well, this doesn't seem right. You've got somebody calling 911, which is used for legitimate business to contact the police and for emergencies, just wanting a ride, or, you know, calling in essentially a fake call. So, this ordinance was requested by the detectives. It defines what misuse of the 911 system is. It makes it very clear that the crime of misuse is not applicable to anybody who's making a good-faith request for emergency assistance based upon a reasonable factual basis that an emergency exists. Doesn't apply to anybody who uses the system to contact the police department or emergency services for legitimate business purposes. So, we still encourage people to call 911, you know, when in... So we still encourage people to call 911, you know, when in doubt if that's who you're looking for, that's who you call. But if you're calling it for the reasons that I've just identified, and there's other examples, then that really isn't the right usage. And this gives the police department a tool to track that caller down and say, hey, knock it off, or else, you know, it's a crime, and here's what will happen to you. So this is a first reading. It's a very straightforward ordinance. It's really up to you if you'd like to put it on consent next time, or discuss it, or if you've got any changes that you'd like to propose or concerns. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is this not anything that we could just pass tonight?
Yes, it's certainly your prerogative if the council so chooses.
Well, I'd like to know what would be the fine, what would be the punishment for?
Yeah, it's a misdemeanor, and the maximum penalty would be a $1,000 fine and up to 90 days in jail. It's up to a judge ultimately to determine what the sentence would be upon conviction.
So this is a, it's a continued problem, is that what you're stating?
Yes. Yeah, we've got another caller in town. It's a little trickier, but generates 200-plus calls a year.
Oh, easily 200, yeah. You know, first beaters on Highway 20, mysterious lights in her backyard, prostitution in the neighborhood, all sorts of stuff.
Other issues we could address there, but it's, you know, those calls are difficult because of the high volume, and we're just not seeing what the caller's reporting.
So how does that work if you're not seeing what the caller's calling about? Then how do you determine, like, how many times, you know what I mean? Like, how do you know when?
You have to take each one of them kind of individually. When everybody that moves in across the street from this person is a prostitute, everybody for years, 20 years, probably something, you know, that's not really going on. We've actually had her reporting lights in her backyard shining in her windows. So we set a camera and never found anything. Looking at the backside of her house, we put things over her window, then she wanted them taken down because she said it was too hot in her room because the window was covered. So there's no rhyme or reason to what she's reporting. So speeding vehicles on Highway 20 at 5:00 in the afternoon, that could be, so that would be something you wouldn't really address.
But that, you know, that would be tough to prosecute under this ordinance, and we're probably dealing with some other issues in that particular instance. But there have been other examples as well of this type of call. And we've got a particular person who's essentially announced to the police that it's this person's intent to utilize the system, really in a manner to be costly and nuisanceome to the community.
And that's meant for someone intentionally misusing the system.
Correct, yes.
Not taking into consideration some older people that's always seeing lights in their yard or something. They're sincere, but they have a habit of doing that.
That's the distinction probably that needs to be made, is it's really about what your state of mind is in making the calls. What was the basis of the call? And you can tell, you know, if you get there, and in your case, the example you give, you know, the senior is legitimately, is, you know, appears to be fearful, then you're going to see that there's probably a legitimate basis. If you get there and instead it's somebody who just thinks it's hilarious, you know, makes you come to the call, ha, 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 well, that's a whole different scenario.
And then that would be up to a judge to determine?
Well, there's multiple layers. You know, the first layer are the police employees, the officers and their team to determine whether they believe a crime has been committed, and if they think so, they refer that. Then you've got a prosecutor who takes a look at it and says, I agree, I think I can win this case, or maybe it happened, but I can't prove it, or, you know, I just don't see it that way. You're wrong. So that's the first check and balance in that system. So they have the ability and the discretion to say, no, we're not going to take this case further. And then the final arbiter is really actually a jury of your peers for a criminal scenario. So you get to impanel folks who sit up here, and the six people say, we don't think it happened, or we think it happened, and then the judge determines the sentence if in fact there's a conviction.
Anything else, council? So it's a first read. Okay, hearing no motion, I will move on to committee reports and start with you, Chief Tucker.
Just a couple of things here. You all probably have heard about our saw where we shut down the place in the 400 block of North Reed Street. We red-tagged that, and we worked with John and Laura, code enforcement, based on some septic failure issues. We essentially did a, well, we had to do a search warrant on the property. The property owners are extremely uncooperative, to the point where one of my officers got bitten by the homeowner, or a resident at that home, not their dog, but the lady that lived there bit him. So we have, we went from a building code violation and trying to sort that out to felony charges for a subject biting one of the officers for a felony assault, when really what we wanted to do is remove the lady there that was in distress and get some of the other people off there and get the code problems solved, which it seems like the code problems are getting worked out right now. And people are moving back in, and we've got the elderly lady in question into the life care center, where she's doing very well and being well taken care of. So that was a kind of an ugly scene for all of us, but it was a necessary one to get a problem solved. We've also been working with Nathan to look at a couple of other locations. He came and helped board up that location for us until we can get things sorted out there. We had another location in the 800 block of Central Street that is kind of a nuisance abandoned deteriorating home that we needed to seal up. People have been crawling in the windows. And we are spending an inordinate amount of time on our one subject that is kind of prompting the misuse of the 911. It's a weekly whether or not the subject's going to go to jail, and multiple times a day that we go contact him. We get numerous complaints from the downtown businesses. We're trying to work with him, but he has absolutely no interest in cooperating or accepting any reasonable assistance. So we're using the court system. Downtown had a breather there for a while. He did 30 days in jail. And that's probably not the best place for somebody with his problems, but it's kind of the only place we're working right now. So it's, that's another difficult problem, and it's a nuisance to everybody that's having to deal with it. And finally, today I had Bill Chambers order about $3,500 worth of electronics equipment for us. We got a grant through Domestic Violence Services to upgrade our cameras, and we get this about every three or four years, which gets us new digital cameras and replaces some of the old stuff that gets broken or outdated, and then gets our detectives some better equipment. We got some new digital voice recorders and all that, all on one grant, and Bill helped us out with that. We got us a really good deal, so we have to maximize our amount of money that we got. And that's it.
Thank you, chief. John?
Well, Joanne is out of the office for today, yesterday, at the wellness training in Linwood, helping the city save money by being a wellness wizard. Earlier this month, we, our office in the city received our, the report from the Department of Ecology, from their community assistance visit back in January, I think it was. And it came back very positive. They, Department of Ecology, reviewed our floodplain management system and code for compliance with FEMA, and they found that everything was absolutely great. And so wrote a really, really nice letter saying that we're doing a good job, and they don't have any requests except for they want us to add the word Washington to our Seadrill Woolley, then add Washington to our code, so I make.
Did you tell them there's only one in the world?
So, you know, they've asked us to do it, and they were really polite about it. So, you know, probably bring that to the council on a slow time to do that little correction that they requested, but otherwise, came back really well, and we're looking good.
Yeah, thank you for the work on that. Those are nice to see.
So we might put Seadrill Woolley, Perrin, the one and only in the world, on Perrin, Washington.
Mark?
Thank you, mayor. Cascade Trail Project bids tomorrow, 2 o'clock, and we'll bring that to you at the April 12 council meeting, possibly for award. A few other things, we have been for over a year, been working on our analysis of the wastewater treatment facility, and I've reported on occasionally. That's getting close to completion. It'll have two elements to it. It's going to look at the capacity of the system for both biological and flow factors, compare those with our permit, and give us a fairly good handle based on flow projections that we're assuming on how long of a life we have on that plant yet. I've reported in the past, we think we have a little more than 10 years. That's appearing to be about right, but there's some nuances to that, and that report will bring that out. And I'll bring a full report to you on that when it's available. I did want to say tonight, though, one thing I've been tasked with doing is looking at our sewer comp plan and doing an update of that, which we have planned for this year, but actually, the deadline on part of that, the part that supports the annexation, which John mentioned as a part of the docketing for the comp plan update, needs to be done in conjunction with that. That's not going to give me the time that I originally thought I had, and my inclination is to engage Brown and Caldwell, who's our consultant for the, worked on the wastewater plant, to do a quick report that will address that. So I'll bring that back to you as a proposed amendment to them sometime over the next month, and get that cracking so I can meet John's deadline for the comp plan. Also along that line, I neglected to remind John that we have some minor edits to the transportation element of the comp plan as well that we would like to add in, and what we will do is bring that in a memo form to you at the next council meeting, so you can add that to the docket if that is acceptable to the council. The edits that I have on there are some that were left over from the Council of Governments' review of our transportation element last year. They didn't get their review done in time for us to get it in the original update that was done in 2016, so we'll take care of those. They're relatively minor, but they're things that do need to be put in there, as well as the complete streets additions or modifications to the code that we did. I have one or two words to add into the goal section of that comp plan that will bring that in compliance with the rest of what we've done in the code and in the Seadrill Woolley Public Works Department standard. So that's the things that will come forward with that. Also, council alerted me to some cracking that they were observing on the Cook Ferry Roundabout. Originally, I didn't think there was much more than what I already knew about. Actually, when I walked the site, you can't see them driving through there, they're not that apparent, but when you walk, they're really apparent. We've got about, I would say, six cracks that are in addition to the three that showed up during the construction process that we sealed at that time that are concerning to me. And I am dealing with the contractor. We're well past the time that was constructed when you'd normally have a warranty, but on that particular project, because of its extended nature, that intersection was built in 2013, finished in October of 2013, so it's three years old, but we have a two-year maintenance bond that doesn't expire until next month. I've alerted the contractor to a possible warranty issue. I'm attempting to arrange a meeting with them. They've been a little reluctant, I think, to respond. They may be trying to run the clock out, but that's not going to work. I do not know that it's their fault or their problem, but at this point, we're assuming that we need to involve them in the process. We're thinking the repair is going to be additional sealing on the joints, but I want to make sure we do what is right for the long-term longevity of that pavement. So we're looking at that closely, and more will be said about that later. We are planning this summer for a crack sealing project on the pavement around town. If push comes to shove, I will add that in as a change order to that, because it's done by the same type of contractors, and get that done as a part of that if we do not involve the contractor that originally constructed. So just wanted to give you an update on that. Also, there are two grants that are currently being called, and the first one is the Skagit County Economic Development Grant, as already mentioned. We haven't been able to determine what from our large list of capital projects might fit under that one this time because of the nature of that. It's not generally been, and in fact, the commissioners have made it a condition that it not be a design-type project, which is too bad, because that would be ideal for moving some of our projects forward. But we are looking at some other alternatives, and I'll be discussing that with the mayor tomorrow. I bring it up tonight because the applications to do on the 14th, we do have another council meeting, I'll be able to come to you if we do decide on a project for that, to ask your permission to submit the application and also to commit the matching funds for that. That are the two things I would need to bring forward for your attention. There's also, through the Council of Governments, another round of their Surface Transportation Program regional grants. Actually, this is a little larger than we've seen in a while. It's $5.1 million, and it has a 10% set aside for non-motorized elements on that, too. We're strongly considering applying for another section of this SR20 Cascade Trail Project. The next sections get a little more challenging because we're approaching the open section of Brickyard Creek, but there is about 750 feet that we could construct to get it to the end of town, and it does include an area that we have some storm drainage work to continue, like we're doing on the one that is being constructed this summer. So that's a possibility, and I think it makes a lot of sense to apply for that because of the stormwater element, if nothing else. But it does extend that farther to the west, and gets us that much closer to getting it to Collins, really, which ultimately is where we'll terminate with our section of that. In addition to that, the other project that we are likely to bring forward to you to submit is a reapplication for the SR20-SR9-North township intersection. You may recall that we had a grant opportunity two years ago under this same program. We submitted for that project. We scored number two on that, but they only had enough funds to fund the number one project, so we think that project will score very well for that. The funding under that program is not available till 2021, which actually fits pretty much right with our own tip for that project. Gives us a few years to plan for it, find the match, or put that together from our sources that we have, the TBD and the impact fee funds. Or if that project is in the can, then it would be a much more attractive project to go for one of the ED grants in a subsequent year. So those are the projects that we're considering, and I'll bring those forward to you over the next couple of meetings for your consideration. Finally, I wanted to report on a meeting that was held over at the Community Center. The mayor graciously agreed to allow DOT to sponsor and coordinate what they call the Skagit Collaborative Meeting. It's something that I think they're going to do more frequently. They've done three of them. That was a third of three that they've done countywide. It's for DOT and local projects that affect various areas of the county. And so we had a booth there. David Lee and I were there. Some of our audience was there last night, too. It was, I think, 30 or so members of the community there. Not a heavy representation, but good questions, and we were able to share the various projects we've been talking about. Couple of things that I was glad that I was there just because of DOT's presence. Couple of things that I was glad that I was there just because of DOT's presence. They kind of swarmed it. I think they had probably eight engineers. And one of my challenges in my job is getting DOT to return phone calls to me. So I had their ear last night, including the region system and director. That was very good. And so we actually got some pretty good business done in between presenting on our own projects. And I also found out a couple of projects that are in the pipeline and also are actually happening this year that I wasn't aware of. You're aware that they're paving from Collins Road to SR-9 South, where that's going to be out to bid shortly and will be built. And we are coordinating that with our trail project, because they occupy the same real estate, basically. That's a good project. They also have a schedule for this year, a bituminous surface treatment, BST they call it, which is a kind of a chip seal. It's a little bit smaller gravel, and then they sear seal on top of it, for Highway 20 all the way from the city limits on the east side of Seadrill Woolley to concrete, 20-mile section. So it's going to be a challenging summer to get back and forth through our area because of our project, the DOT's paver on the west side of town, the BST project on the east side of town. But these are projects that have been sorely needed for quite a few years, especially the pavements on Seadrill Woolley, which is the other one that they are planning. They are actually planning for 2018 to pave the rest of Highway 20 within the city and then Highway 9 North to the city limits, which it's sorely in need of that. So we're looking forward to that happening. It'll be inconvenient for the traveling public, but really is needed. Lots of bumps, as you know, from all the utilities that have been put in and just the pavement itself that's breaking up in quite a few areas now. So I wanted to let you know about that. Maybe the other one, just to be aware of, if you travel that way, on SR-9 South, Francis Road and clearly, they are planning to build a roundabout at that intersection of Francis Road. So that'll be coming up, I believe, this year.
Go ahead, Brett.
Mark, with the Collins to, what did you say?
SR-9 South.
Okay. Is there any sort of work that they could do to prep for the Cascade Trail? Like, I mean, what do they do? Are they just dealing with the surface of the street? Are they dealing with the margins or whatever, the medians?
It's a grind and inlay is what they call it. They'll come in and they'll grind out 1,700s, two inches, and then they'll inlay the asphalt over. They don't generally go all the way out beyond the fog line, the stripes on the outside, because usually your shoulders are in okay shape. In our case, we're pretty much taking it from the fog line in, so we'll have new pavement for the whole thing. That's why we're coordinating this with them so carefully. It has saved us some money on our project, because we were going to have to replace the signal loops of Trail Road and our own dying as a part of our project, because we're running storm grain through the intersection. They have to take those out as a part of their project and replace them, because they're doing the inlay and the overlay, and then will destroy them. So that was a fortunate occurrence there, and we're glad that that's happening.
Okay. Thanks. So we shouldn't complain that the roads need to be fixed and also complain while they're being fixed.
That's right.
But I say shouldn't, because people will.
Well, and unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, when you travel, they're doing their paver at night. We're doing our project in the day. So it's going to be a little bit challenging to get around.
Okay, noted. Aaron, anything?
No, I've just been busy working on the next steps on the library, conceptual agreements, and just lots going on this spring so far.
Betsy?
April Perry, a Skagit Valley College student intern, completed her 120-hour internship with the Finance Department and did an outstanding job. She accomplished what appeared, felt like Herculean tasks for us, and lifted the load or the weight from our shoulders. So we're very grateful to her and wish her well in her continued search for employment as she graduates. I believe they've had their graduation for this quarter. So she will be hopefully gainfully employed soon. And then I wanted to mention that Cheryl is also at the Wellness Conference with Joanne. Hopefully, they're representing our city well and come back with all sorts of exciting and encouraging wellness activities for us.
Thank you. Jermaine?
I just wanted to remind folks, if you didn't know, about the Clear Lake Fire Department Pancake Breakfast. That's this coming Saturday. I think it's $10. So I saw that it was $10. They have a Facebook page. $10, and then $20 for three. They do a raffle, and it's really good. I believe it was last year that I went, and it was really good. And that's from 6:00 in the morning till 11:00 at the station. That's it.
Brenda?
I have nothing.
Julia?
So I was actually invited by Joanne to join the Wellness Committee. She wants, we actually have given her a raise because she's covering that part of, what, that program, that it actually helps reduce the insurance, which is really great for the city and great for them, and everybody gets healthy along the way, our checkbook and their bodies. Something that I thought that was really interesting was that she received the award, basically, didn't she, Erin? Or was it just the City of Seadrill Woolley?
The Well City Award is for the city's wellness program. So Joanne's the coordinator of that effort.
But we actually have heard a thank for it.
Yes, oh, sure.
She has put together a program here in the kitchen, which I've actually seen some of the council members here eat the snacks. She also has soup there for people who don't bring their lunch, and it's all healthy. It's all healthy food for people to do, they put their money in and pay for it. She also had, or maybe Serena had volunteered to, on Monday nights, to do exercise here for council members, as well as for the staff, the city staff. So you're invited to do that. She also, while I was there, she had Mark Pearson. He's out at the hospital. He runs the exercise program out there.
Fitness center.
Fitness center, yeah, thank you, yeah. And he was talking about that he's organizing the Trek for Treasure this year. I don't know if you're familiar with that. But there's, I guess there's a couple teams here in Seadrill Woolley on the staff here that do it.
One of the last.
Oh, yeah? Yeah? So, and this year, the theme is going to be looking for Sasquatch, so it should be kind of interesting. Anyway, she wanted the council to know exactly what's going on. She works very hard. The meetings are well-run. They talk about possibility of avoiding accidents. If there is an accident that occurs, they talk about how they can keep from avoiding it. It's just really well done, and she wanted you to know that that's what she's been doing, and she works very hard at it. And then today, we held a Business Development Committee meeting, and we discussed the signage out on Highway 9 and 20. I was kind of sorry to see Mary go. She's the one who brought it up before the council, and also Brett has mentioned it. So we, at the end of our meeting, we actually took a ride. We rode up Highway 9, came back down 20, and we actually looked at the signs that direct people into downtown Seadrill Woolley. Are they clearly marked? How many signs are there? And we discovered that maybe there are some ample signs, however, maybe more difficult to see because they're listed with multiple signs. So we came up with some ideas of what might work to better mark the direction into the city, and there'll probably be further information on that as we discuss it. And then we also discussed, you brought it up, John, the Integrated Planning Grant from the Department of Ecology. And that's something that we discussed. We thought that it would be a good measure for us here in Seadrill Woolley to have that land out there on Jamison inspected for possible toxins. So I guess as a point of business, I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor or to give him some direction as to applying for that Integrated Planning Grant from the Department of Ecology. The money would be used, as John had stated, to determine possible toxins on the property and what steps there might be needed for any company to come in to clean that up or even the owner. So if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we direct the mayor to apply for the Integrated Planning Grant from the Department of Ecology.
Second. Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Sandstrom, to authorize the mayor to apply for the IPG grant from Department of Ecology. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Chuck? Oh, I'm sorry.
And that's all I have.
I would like to thank Erin for organizing our little tour of the new jail. It's very impressive, and it's not nice enough that I want to spend a lot of time there, but it was very interesting. And all I could think about when I was walking down the hallway is all that conduit underneath. First time we went down there. So it is a very nice jail, and hopefully, we'll be able to get some of these bench warrants and all that stuff taken care of, and you get a warrant, you'll have a place to put them. So, thank you again.
Eric?
Thank you to Chief Klinger and several of his staff for providing us some safe traffic control with Mr. Klinger's sessional out of town this afternoon. It's always nice to have those guys available. And as I was coming back into town, as I was crossing Highway 9, am I correct in noticing that the double yellow line turning into Floyd's is now gone? So you can turn left heading east on East State Street into the parking lot of Floyd's? So it's not a ride-in, ride-out now?
That was following up on a council request several months back. I don't know if they've got it installed yet, but the intention is to install one of those C-curbs similar to what you see going under the trestle on Highway 20 and over by the shopping center on the pavilion, so that it precludes you driving that unless you've got a very big set of tires.
Right now, it just looks like it's blacked out.
Yeah, well, and the first thing we had to do was remove the existing stripes.
So it's a temporary removal of that.
We had to remove the existing stripes before we could bond down the curves to that. So that will be done here shortly.
So I wasn't, not imagining.
Anything else, Rick?
No.
Brett? Okay, so first, I'm going to fill in for Chief Klinger. We have late materials, and I'm just going to read this letter from Dr. Russell, who's the Skagit County EMS Medical Program Coordinator. Dear Chief Klinger, I've just completed a review of the recent batch of templated chart reviews for BLS transports that I was provided by Kevin Chow, and was so impressed by the quality of the charting that I immediately wanted to express my appreciation for all the hard work involved. The current charting is a testament to the time, energy, and commitment to quality improvement of the members of the Seadrill Woolley Fire Department. I wanted to make sure that you are aware of the hard work that's being put in. It has not gone without notice, and I want to express my thanks to all members of the Fire Department for their dedication. I can say in all seriousness that the advancements in charting are of such quality that the Seadrill Woolley Fire Department documentation for BLS transport now often rivals or even exceeds the current charting for their ALS coworkers. Keep up the good work. So this was a program that was taken with a jaundice eye, I would say. People were very skeptical about whether our Fire Department should even be involved in it, and now we're getting letters like this from the Medical Program Director of the county. And I wish Dean was here to take credit for that, but if you see him, thank him. Council, I sent out email requests today to see if anybody was going to go to the Lions Club Dinner on Saturday. We got a special guest. It's the Lieutenant Governor, so it's kind of unique, and there's limited seating. So if you want to go, please let me know. It's $20 for the dinner. It's their 80th anniversary, and you get to hear the Lieutenant Governor talk, so that's kind of neat. The Vietnam Veterans Parade, our first one ever, will be on the 30th. It's been posted on the city website. Got a call from the newspaper today about it. So that'll be exciting. I hope people will come out and show their support. And what's that? On the library, and I want to thank the council for, I think, taking a brave step forward, and that was reciprocated by our district partners. It changes our emphasis now. I think Erin, at the last meeting, explained in great detail the process that we have going forward. There's lots of work. But our emphasis now is more on the how, when, and where we're going to do this than on the if. And my advice to people who are concerned about the library, and I understand you are honestly concerned about the library, now is a great opportunity to get on board, accept that this is a very likely outcome, and help us shape what that outcome looks like. I know what people don't want. I know a lot less about what people really do want. So if you want things, we're all ears, you know? If you want more books or classic books, tell us that. If you want big rooms, tell us that. If you want little rooms, tell us that. If you want art hanging on the walls, tell us that. All of those things will be taken into account. So that's just my advice. You don't have to take it. But if it were me, and I wanted to affect the outcome, that's what I would do. And we do have executive session under RCW 4230.110, subparagraph 1B. Be about 20 minutes with possible action. You can stay and wait for us or head on over for dinner. Thank you all for coming. Now the clock comes on.